This conference will now be recorded.
Let's see who we got.
Scott's not coming, I expect he'll be last.
No, no, I'll just wait.
He hasn't sent you that long.
He knows what to do with me. Dancing, what are you going to call it? Yeah. All right. He knows what he is, because I use him for the whole. Okay, we'll call this work session to order since we have some, we have a presentation on the agenda as the first item for discussion. And as you can see from the screen, we have the esteemed Mr. McKenna and Greg Oates from, the company name again.
Next Factor. Next.
Next Factor. And we have MJ here, all, all who.
Keep things moving.
Present. Present a destination management plan, having, having seen a little bit of, Jim, thank you for sending me the link on that Breckenridge thing, I actually did look at it, it's interesting. So with that said, I'm not sure who leads off.
So we're going to let, Jim McKenna is going to introduce Greg Oates, but first, Jim, do you want to just give a little bit of an overview as how do we came to this place that we thought this would be probably a good direction for our community to go in, to kind of create a path for our future sustainability balancing tourism and our community?
I think so, I think you just gave the message though, but yes, I will. We've been actually talking internally about this for a few years, and I think it's almost become more of an issue the further we go on. And what I mean by that is, I think we've all felt the stress and heard the stress of our peaks and valleys. You know, how many events are too many, how, how many people is too large, the short-term rental thing, how that's affected our community. And, you know, COVID, I think, has even brought it a little closer that now's the time to start talking about managing the destination. I think it's very clear that we all saw this year with the proximity we are to the major metropolitan areas of the Northeast U.S., not even counting Canada this year because the borders were closed, that we saw an influx of people that might have historically traveled long distances out west or maybe to Europe or gone other places, but the Adirondacks and specifically Lake Placid has sort of been a, been a spot that, I don't want to say rediscovered, but the closeness, the atmosphere, the community has really driven a lot of visitation. And as we move forward, I mean, 20 years ago, that wasn't the case, now it is. 20 years from now is what we're concerned about, is that I think travel trends have made a significant change, and not only short-term for COVID, I think it's sort of a, a shifting trend right now where destinations that are close to metropolitan areas like ours are, are going to grow in popularity. And with that, you know, is a challenge. The, the challenge is really how do we take advantage of that for the benefit of our residents? How do we take advantage of that long-term? As MJ said, for sustainable purposes, to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a situation where Venice has gotten, where, where over-tourism is now more of an issue. We think at this point, a destination management plan, sort of like an overall encompassing plan, that is really about managing tourism, it's not about growing tourism, it's about positioning tourism to be a better vehicle for the benefit of our residents. It's about understanding that it's maybe even, rather than to have high peaks and high valleys, and then how do we do this in a way that we encompass real engagement from the community? I think that's what we're talking about as a destination management plan. It's, it's something, it's, it's not the land use plan, it's not the comprehensive plan, but it's something that's sort of up there and over, that we know the direction we're going with our economy. So I think that's sort of my intro a little bit, and with that, I'd like to introduce Greg Oates, who's with MM-GY Next Factor, that has had a lot of experience with what I just talked about, both in large destinations and also smaller destinations. So Greg, welcome and thank you for taking the time.
Thank you very much, Jim, thank you MJ, and hello everyone. It's always great to talk about Lake Placid and the Adirondacks and everything that's happening there. I was in the region about a year ago now, maybe a little more, to facilitate a strategic planning framework for Roost. And back then, we talked about some of the things that we're going to talk about today. Although Jim did a pretty great job of explaining everything, this is a very, very complex subject with a lot of moving parts, I'm going to try and provide an overview for the next 15 minutes and use some case studies, but really the takeaway here, we're talking about a complete mind shift about optimizing the visitor economy. So we used to talk about destination master plans and destination marketing, it was just about driving growth, period, visitor volume, period, room nights, didn't matter what time of year, if it was all at once, didn't matter if your service staff could afford to live there, didn't matter who benefited, it was just about growth. Now, when we talk about destination management, it's this idea that tourism isn't the end goal, it's really quality of life and equitable economic development for everyone is the priority facilitated through, through tourism. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that. We have an incredible amount of experience looking at this, even more so after or during COVID because all the challenges have been exacerbated. We've developed Destination Next, which is overarching strategic framework for Destinations International, which is a global association representing the interests of destination marketing and management organizations, DMOs if you will. And then when COVID really made its presence known, in February, early March, we saw that everything was going to be upended. We got on the phone and Zoom with every DMO CEO across North America that we could talk to, literally hundreds, we developed a short-term recovery strategy for the next six to 18 months. Overall, just very briefly, the company has been in operation for over seven years, 185 clients worldwide, and we really specialize in this idea of destination management, which isn't new, because these ideas about how to optimize the visitor economy and ensure more people could benefit in communities that were experiencing a lot of growth has really been taken root about the last three years. And you see plans from the Netherlands, 2030 perspective, its tagline is to ensure that everyone can benefit from tourism, Copenhagen, New Zealand, California, and then there's all kinds of smaller destinations that have put out similar plans. And the idea here is aligning tourism, community, and economic development strategy to ensure long-term sustainable and equitable growth. So this, this, it's, it's not a shift from destination marketing, because marketing is still core to everything we do. We're still talking about growth, just smart growth. So it's really an expansion from promoting communities to building communities, which in turn provides more enriching stories to promote, and it drives that visitor activity throughout the year and includes more people, so it's being more inclusive. And it's this idea that communities aren't something we have, they're something we do. And we can be much more intentional about how we steward all of these different connections and developments in a destination, so that people in tourism know parks and rec and arts and culture and workforce development and nonprofits and educational institutions, either in the district or beyond, all sort of know what everyone's doing. And how do you connect the dots and optimize that? So one case study, and this we've pretty, pretty much been obsessed with since March, Destination Canada asked us to figure out a global framework for destination management that was scalable to any size destination, from a large city to a small rural community. And it was very much with the idea of scaling this worldwide that every destination could use, based on the ideas Emmanuel and Montreal here said, you know, if we haven't, if we don't do something different with travel, then we really haven't learned anything from the crisis. So what we've come up with, and what's been getting a lot of positive feedback, is this idea that marketing is one aspect of a much broader matrix, if you will. And here, this framework, you have the community inside, you have the visitors outside, and DMOs operate in the shared, shaded area. I hope everyone can see this, but I'll just briefly describe it. And the idea is that community well-being and resilience is the top of the pyramid, meaning it's not just the big asset owners that you want to prioritize, but every small business and every employee, and that everyone has an opportunity to thrive in the destination for the long term, that's where the resilience comes in. Then also looking at build and grow, but to do that sustainably, and it's not just a matter of development, but providing and enabling environment for, for new investments in the region. How does the community work together to facilitate that? And here's really the big one, it's aligning public and private governance. So how does the Board of Directors for Tourism, and how does the Board of Directors for, or the, say for an institution or a community organization, if, if you have one, and the Town Council all understand what's the biggest priorities for the destination, how to get there and how to do that together? That's been the big missing piece globally. And then we come to marketing, and really, coming out of COVID, it's very much this idea of capturing the community DNA, what motivates you, what are your values, who are the change makers and influencers, and just the cool people in the community, and leveraging that to inspire the community and to understand the value of tourism versus just promoting your assets, because as amazing as a hiking or biking trail or a mountain or a cool coffee shop, someone down the road has the exact same thing. So that's really where the whole world is going now in the, in the realm of the global visitor economy. So now a specific case study for where we worked a year ago was Breckenridge, Colorado, and similar, similar issues. You know, we've done over 250 strategies, strategy plans for DMOs, and I've never seen a destination more broken than Breckenridge early last year. And that's because Denver is one of the fastest-growing destinations, cities in the country, Breckenridge is two hours up by 70, it's the first real sort of ski resort area from Denver, and it's just getting swarmed with cars. Record was 32,000 day visitors one day in 2018. And so all anyone could really talk about was parking, and how it was destroying the social fabric. So we developed a management plan, and this was one of the first times where we really shifted from a master plan to a management plan, because their problem wasn't pure volume, their challenge was, sorry, I have someone all of a sudden arrived at the door, their challenge was the visitor span, the amount of spending that was coming into the community, lots of people, but not a lot of spending. So we developed a management plan that included, and plans can include these or some of these, but it starts with a steering committee, then starts with a review of what's happening in the destination, very thorough there, look at what plans already exist. So in Hilton Head, for example, there is a comp plan, 340-page master comp plan, an arts and rec plan, a park, sorry, arts and culture plan, parks and rec plan, and then there's our plan, there's also a cultural attraction plan. So aligning all those, we bring in our Destination Next survey to gauge destination strength and community alignment, we can do resident sentiment surveys, that's the big piece that's growing in popularity, and then the community and stakeholder engagement, which is really the big piece of everything that we do. So, I'm just wondering what to do, if you could just excuse me for one sec, I have an anticipated caller, I'll be right back, sorry.
Like on CNN, they were, a governor or somebody, and their grandson was climbing all over.
Okay, sorry about that. We also look, when we do a destination management plan, relevant travel and tourism trends, we come up with a vision that's very much community-centric, and then we develop the strategic goals and actionable initiatives, which really provide the roadmap for how the community come together and what they should focus on, and then some key takeaways, just to provide a context of the overall experience, to, to really show that everything that's being proposed came from the community, and we, we want to wrap that up and just provide some good takeaways for everyone. So, when we came to Breckenridge, again, everyone was talking about parking and traffic fees and whatnot, and so what we did is just start talking to everyone that we could. We had over 35 one-on-one interviews, we did three big town halls, we did 13 focus groups with different segments such as realtors and restaurants and tour operators and what have you, and all together, we spoke to over 250 people. And what was interesting is, we're at the beginning, I remember I was with a Realtor group, and I was explaining that, you know, people were saying, maybe we need to look beyond parking, and it was actually the mayor's wife who was advocating for that, and one Realtor popped up and said, what could be more important than parking? And that was at the very beginning, and I was taken aback a bit. And as we moved through all of the community engagement, and everyone started talking openly and transparently, other themes started coming up, such as, you know, how can people afford to live there, young people afford to live there that work in the restaurants that everyone likes so much and work on the ski hill? There's a challenge with the quality of the schools and the quality of the medic, Medicare, medical facilities. Young people wanted to stay there, but they, they didn't see a future for them all year round, as they grew into that sort of young 30s and they started having families, they didn't see opportunity, and it was very much a worry that Breckenridge was going to turn into kind of a retirement village, and they'd have to bust everyone in to, to work at all the different organizations. So towards the end, we had another person in a focus group who said, you know what's really important here, is that my daughter can afford to live and thrive in the community where she grew up. And suddenly, with those kind of conversations, there's very much a shift in priorities among everyone. So as we developed the strategic plan, we came up with these four goals. One was to deliver a balanced year-round economy so that people could make money all year round, and that restaurants could have, could, you know, come up with their staffing levels, and organizations and businesses could devise strategy based on the idea that they could make money year-round. Please excuse me one more moment.
Can you do that, wrapped-up take-around dog?
We'll know in about 30 seconds.
Oh, boy.
And the reason that we're using Breckenridge is because when we were researching them, Breckenridge resonated as such a similar destination to us and some of the very similar challenges that we're experiencing, so we thought, you know, this is a good, not to say that their goals will be our goals, or their initiatives will be our initiatives, but just to give you an idea of how the process unites.
Also, they're similar size.
There's a lot of similarities.
Sorry, I'm giving a presentation, the dogs are all, if you want to come here. They also train access here, don't they?
Okay, you know, after doing so many of these, I figured I've dealt with pretty much every scenario, but clearly not. Okay, so, as I think MJ was mentioning, this is just a case study to show the strategy, and, you know, these will be different, but often similar for, for many destinations like yours, where you have that, you're experiencing year-over-year growth, you have high peaks and valleys, which are, if anything, being exacerbated, you have a pristine environment that is getting impacted more and more, and it's that environment that's attracting people, and then other factors like shared accommodations, whatnot, a lot of different factors. So their first goal was to really look at having a year-round economy and diversifying the economy. I had one 31-year-old single mom tell me, she said, you know, I just, I can't afford to live here, we're moving to Montana. Second goal was to, and this was really, really important here, because, you know, I don't know if you have a lot of competing destinations, but in Colorado, there's, you know, 100 different ski towns, resort towns, and they felt what made them special was really the, the community DNA, and how they didn't see themselves as a tourism destination, but when there's 32,000 people just coming for the day, which means they're not spending any money, they're not staying overnight, they're not contributing to the tax base, and moreover, it's really, they felt destroying the, the local, why people want to live there, and what makes, what makes the community special. The third one was just talking about experiences, getting people out of cars, how do you get them to trails, how do you get them biking and hiking and everything, but to steward that as well and develop a reservation system so that you didn't have all of the overtourism that was happening in certain days, which were many of them. And then, and this was interesting, they want to position themselves as sort of a leading voice in the future of mountain living and rural, remote living, and, and what it means to be in front of what's happening in the world, whether that's climate or whether that's how communities live, work, and play together, all that. And so they, they decided they were going to start a network among other ski towns and mountain towns to really start knowledge sharing about best practices. So that was the final, really, situation here in terms of the goals, there was actionable initiatives for each one, but what was so amazing was as we were going through the ratification process with Town Council, they looked at this and they said, we're going to adopt that, this as the town's plan, with a few additions from some of the things they had related to public works and utilities and new broadband and whatnot. And this eventually became the plan for, for the town. So it was this perfect example when we talk about aligning tourism, community, and economic development, and when you do that, that's always been the roadmap for driving destination performance and quality of life. You know, we, we talk about this a lot, this was just such a perfect case study, and it really started going back to that vision that we came up with during a, one of the town halls, and it was this idea of balancing, creating, you know, harmonizing quality of life for residents and quality of place for visitors. And at the time, this was exciting, one of the Town Council members said, just coming up with this vision was worth the price of the whole project itself, it was an eight-month project, and we thought, well, this is pretty great too, but now, after everything that's happened, not just from COVID, but before COVID through last year, and now, this almost seems trite, because it's now the foundation for every, every destination, pretty much everywhere. This is just, you know, sort of the due north for destination marketing management moving forward. So that's just a brief overview of destination management planning and some case studies. As I was saying at the beginning, it's, it's very, very complex, because you can come up with all these strategies, but you don't go very far unless everyone in the community appreciates that they're part of the visitor economy by then, and, and really works with, you know, the, the overarching plans put in place. And the idea, any, just to wrap up, any DMO wants three things, they want the community to understand what they do, support what they do, and then actually help them do what they do. So that's that, happy to answer any questions.
What's a GMO, so at the beginning?
What's a DMO? So, so typically a DMO, it used to be a CBB, Convention and Business Bureau, now it's the DMO, Destination Marketing Organization, but this shift has been really beyond marketing to management. So with some places, they'll call themselves a DMMO, Destination Marketing Management Organization, you look at Europe and elsewhere in the world, they've just completely shifted from Destination Marketing Organization to Destination Management Organization.
And so Roost is a DMO.
Same.
Roost, we're a DMO. So, the reason that we brought Greg here to present today is again, the idea that in order for us, us as a community, not us as Roost, the DMO, to move this forward, there would have to be an agreement on the town and the village and the community and the, you know, Development Commission and everybody, that this is, that we need this, that we need this umbrella, and it wouldn't, you know, dissolve any of the committees that are already at work, whether it's the appearance or, or any of the other, there's many committees, right? Yeah, the Housing Committee, the Land Use Co. Committee, all those committees would still continue to stay in place, but they would fall, you know, they would kind of be in a, in a bucket, you know, under the five initiatives or six or whatever that the community as a whole determined would be what we wanted to see for our future here. Because we know we are in all kinds of crises, from workforce crisis to housing crisis to declining population, to declining, you know, school enrollment, and all those things have to be addressed in order for us to be sustainable as a community.
An overuse of resources.
Oh, yes, an overuse of resources. And, you know, too much business sometimes and not enough business other times, and although we don't talk about this, we do need to look at non-tourism-based industry, we need to have a balance.
So, let me just add MJ, and you sort of touched on it, it's, you know, the Development Commission or planning groups, they're all part of this process, because they all have to deal with the stresses sometimes that, that tourism brings our community. So it's a matter of getting everybody engaged in the process and then coming up with the result that everybody feels comfortable with, and as Greg said, it's about, I, I love that line, Greg, you're right, harmony of quality of life for residents and quality of place for visitors. I mean, that's how we're going to sustain ourselves long-term. I mean, I, you know, I started saying 20 years ago, as I started, we were one thing, now we're something else, but we really have to start focusing on 20 and 30 years beyond, you know, what we can be, and the more we get our handle on how to manage our successful tourism economy, the better positioned we are to have a positive effect on the residents in the future. That's really what this is about.
Jim, I've been told that we, our time has expired here today from.
Well, I think it's, I think the topic is, is certainly timely for Lake Placid. You know, we, we've just recently been able to put in place vacation rental, short-term vacation rental legislation, which has been sorely needed and desired by the community for a while. You know, and, and that's beginning to, it's now affected to the extent that we have a, we, we now know who our vacation rental properties are, we have, we have the ability now to monitor the many types of complaints that, that come from that, and that's, we're, we're talking about quality of place and quality of life, and it affects both sides of that equation, Jim, very quickly. But I do think the community at this point, I think about our comprehensive plan, and it talks a lot about quality of life, but I think this is taking it to a level where the community itself in the last two years has verbalized the thoughts that, you know, the, the, the volume of events is sometimes overwhelming. I'm hearing sometimes on the street that business people get tired before the summer is really thoroughly worked out, and I think all of it, all of it is saying one thing, and that is that the community wants, or would, would like to have a better balance in terms of all of this, because quality of residence, like, clearly has been impacted, not necessarily intentionally, but nevertheless, that happens.
I was part of a previous presentation, and did I miss the part that they're, they're looking forward as far as a transitional sort of economy, not as, it's a tourism, but what components of tourism are going to be existent in 10 years, 15 years from now? Because I know they mentioned it previous one. Skiing could be, is huge here, but 20 years from now, 30 years from now, it may not necessarily have, we have something in place in order to replace, to replace skiing as sort of a component.
Having a plan for our tourism as, you know, the, the environment shifts because of what may or may not be considered global warming, and so those are all things to take into consideration, and what are those indoor activities for the traveler to come and experience, or alternative outdoor experiences? Yeah, we did talk about that, you're right.
Because it seems, from what I, because of those previous, this is, some of the committees that we have address the needs and concerns now, but this particular seems to be a study, seems to be something that's going to prepare us for 10 years out, 20 years out. We don't think in that. And we don't think in terms of decades, we're going to shortchange ourselves and our community, leaving us having to deal with crises after crises after crises.
Reacting and not preparing.
Already reacting.
Right. So with the, and so that's where you need to get out ahead of it.
Proactive.
Yeah, right.
I think, I think the Breckenridge, uh, plan was, Greg, it was easy to go through. I, I read it, I read quite a bit of it the other night. And there are, there were aspects of it that we're working on that, that really don't relate to the quality of life, or maybe they do. And that is the fact that I noticed that their website, for example, was very easy. When I, when I, you, you, you popped on the four major goals that they had and the minute you popped them up, you got, you got the backup data. Um, and that's something we're looking at too, is government communications right now. Um, there's, there's a group working on trying to improve that. And, uh, you know, in the simplest way, I'd like to be able to alert all of our constituents when we're going to have a power outage in the community. And we, right, right now, today, um, that's only a topic of discussion in a committee. The, uh, the interesting thing is though, that at, at the same time, we're learning that we, we have some resources within the organization. And, and, and probably within me and our, uh, accounting and operating systems that would allow us to do more. That's, that's all relatively new development.
Uh, I did find out, um, I actually was shown today. We have the capability of drafting a form letter and then if, depending upon what area we want to hit or if we want to hit the entire, um, village and town, um, of exporting all of those addresses out of our system and putting them right onto that form letter. So if it's, you know, a week ahead, we know there's a power outage, we don't have push notifications yet. Or if there's, uh, something big that's, that's coming up that we need to let people know about. At least we have the option currently of, of mailing out letters if we need to. Or we can get all of those addresses imported out the letters.
So it's interesting that you bring that up because in Breckenridge, that was very much really the focus was how to connect the community with itself and how to get people talking together and sharing information, including across the public and private sectors, because you had all these conversations taking place in all these little silos. And really in effect, the process, the eight-month process of facilitating opportunities for everyone to share their opinions and get them out in the open, instead of having little conversations in some Facebook group, was as much of the value as the end plan because the community came together really on its own and, and decided how it wanted to move forward. The plan was just sort of a recording of that, which as you mentioned, is, is really designed to be easy to digest, approach and share. Just because the last thing we want is this thing just to sit on a shelf. And also to the point about, you know, twenty, thirty years from now and looking, thinking about sustainability and how will weather patterns shift potentially, which will, you know, cut into some of the winter sports. Really the big focus now is the number one goal for the Breckenridge plan was to diversify the economy. So looking at culinary, cultural wellbeing, summer activities, um, events, and not big events necessarily, but what kind of high-value corporate events in shoulder season and slower months, potentially to offset the, I mean, that's really the basis of resilience to offset the challenges, um, coming down the road.
Well, you mentioned shoulder seasons. Do you have anything besides skating and hockey?
Well, traditionally we would have conferences, but.
I mean, when I was on the board back in the nineties, we were six years ago, what do we do in the shoulder season? What do we do? Nothing was ever off the back initial until the hockey.
Well, now with the conference center, we didn't have previously, that's opened up opportunities. So we had some strong fall and spring.
But back then you used to be able to go in for a conference center.
But I think what happened, yeah. And my understanding is, and I don't, you know, this might, obviously, we might go back to those days, but what happened was, um, the girl like hold a certain amount of conferences, didn't have a kit, you know, different hotels were bringing in the food and then the facility became dilapidated. So the conferences grew and the facility became dilapidated. So we lost a lot of that business.
And if you wanted to do hockey in conferences at the same time, you're competing for the ice sheets or the space.
That's currently the situation too. But if we can do that Sunday, Monday, Tuesday conference, which we have found and some weekends in, you know, the before, after summer, before, uh, you know, hockey season, we've got success with that too.
Yeah, you know, what Greg is talking about too, is that there's a, you know, the type of business we're having today. I mean, today, after Columbus Day, there's traffic in town that is leisure travelers. And how do we, you know, maybe that's something that gets cultivated for the fall season. And so, I mean, I just think there's, there's, the travel trends are changing right now. COVID-driven, yes, but there's going to have, there's going to be a long-term effect of that.
And so I'll give you another example, which was everybody, this is more of a destination management issue, but we had a hundred and fifty people come into the visitor's center today looking for something to do. The day after Columbus Day, everything is closed, you know? Now it's maybe weekends and that's it. So it's hard to cultivate that business mid-week when we don't really have anything enough to offer. If they don't want to go into the woods, you know? We don't really want everybody in the woods. Or as many.
I didn't say we don't want anyone in the woods. I know that everyone else can.
I don't think we want as many.
Well, I think this is a whole different year. In the past, we always did business up until the week after Columbus Day. But this year, it isn't like all those school children are back in school. A lot of them are online. I'm curious to see if we keep seeing people now coming here because they can.
We have had, um, in, you know, past years after Columbus Day, there's still the empty nester traveler and a struggle to give them direction as to what to do, you know? But it's moved heightened this year than, you know, than the years past. And it's weather dependent too, you know? We've had some beautiful October post-Columbus days.
Well, I think in the past, at least the answer I was given, why the state, in order to aren't running facilities after Columbus Day is they need time to switch over to the winter operations. I don't know if that's still the case or, you know? But it seems like a lot of the places like White Bay, she can't take the, you know?
Did the Bobsled charge shut down? Didn't they just open their coaster?
Yeah, but they're just on weekends.
Oh.
The museum is closed during the week. The Gonzales closed during the week. I'm not, I think even the highway might not be open right now.
And of course, that's all weather dependent, frost or done.
Yeah.
You know, we've never been in a better position to diversify our economy a little bit than they are right now. We see what's going on with remote workers and some corporations. I saw a figure where thirty-three percent of the people are working at home and sixteen percent of the corporations think they like that model. That is a tremendous opportunity for us to get some of that, those remote workers to come into that, some of the new housing that's going to come online. And that's, how does that change things? That changes things because that can be population growth. That can refill our schools. That can make the economy more dependent on its residents on a year-round basis as well. So I just think if we look at things and look what's happening right now, how do we position to take advantage of it for the benefit of the community? That's really what we're talking about.
Yeah. And this is, I wouldn't say it's first person. I've had several conversations with people renting short-term rentals for a month or two and are deciding to work from here. Since within Lake Placid proper, we have decent internet. So are able to take their job with them up here and they rented for a couple of months. So.
How do we convert them into residents? That's what we have to do.
What about the people who work here already, who can't afford to live here? And their children are going to a different school district because they can't get into Lake Placid Central School. Vacation rental, people come up here and, and stay forever. But then you have people who actually live here, who can't afford to stay here, which is why the numbers for the schools are going down too, because the parent can't afford to buy a house within the school district.
And so that would be part of that conversation is the destination management, because that's crucial. We need to have people that live and work in this community for the hospitals, for the grocery stores, for the restaurants, for the, I mean, all across the board.
Those treasurers.
One thing that I hope to say is that when there is a transition and whether the village board can do something to mitigate it. But when, uh, and I'm one who's not so much like pro names, but the, the, the names that have, are woven into the fabric of Lake Placid are starting to leave. And when that character goes, it can't be replaced. Cause that's part of the history of it. That's one thing that we're facing as well.
Yeah, for sure.
No doubt about that. So Jim, where, where do we go from here?
Well, I guess we're looking for a sort of endorsement that this is a good concept. You know, we feel that the town board thought we should continue moving down this road. We've had some good conversations with the development commission, with Dean and others. We were, MJ has been working with a community engagement committee, getting them engaged into what this could potentially be. And I guess we want to be in a position, uh, that we are moving forward on this probably by, you know, this year so that we can hit the ground running next year. Um, you know, uh, we would want to talk a little bit about, you know, how we all participate in it, but we're not ready to do that conversation yet. MJ?
At some point have to talk about money.
I think it was so translated.
You think it's important that we all get in the game?
We need a consultant who would be a third party. That's who we've been, you know, Greg, from Next Factor is the third party. He is the consultant that we're suggesting we bring to the table.
Okay.
And we have looked at other, um, organizations, but Next Factor seems to align the best with the work that they've done in the past with other communities, with our community.
Well, I think more.
Yes, more to come.
I think the question's a no-brainer. Do you need something to bring the residents and the visitors together? Of course. And then the question is, how much does this cost? We don't have a clue. If it's two million dollars, it's out of the question in Lake Placid. But if it's something reasonable, we can afford, yes.
I think that it's a reasonable to afford if we all throw in. So I'm, don't, I'd put it, it's about a guest in it around a hundred thousand. So it's obtainable with everybody finds some money in their budget.
It's interesting. We have Greg listening, but that's okay.
Yeah, all the time. I, I, I think there are some opportunities out there for funding. We're, we're looking ahead and frankly, the, the first, the first funding source I think about it, aside from the fact that I think everybody needs skin in the game, is the, uh, the, the current community development bet tax. Maybe, maybe a portion of that can be used in this manner. It is, it is partly directed at, uh, improving the tourism aspect of, of our livelihood. But I also think that the community itself, if, if there's going to be a real commitment, there's got to be, as I've said, there's got to be real skin in the game from all the players.
Yeah, they're worth looking into, I think.
I think, I think, uh, if, if, if that's about as close as we could get without a formal resolution, MJ, at this board meeting or this work session.
That's just wanted to get your input and, you know, some.
Do you have a problem if I pass the link for Breckenridge on to my other trustees?
Please do.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I thought, uh, you know, like I said, there was, uh, I, I, the, the time I was able to spend with it, it was, it was almost enjoyable because it was like we were reading about ourselves.
Mayor, if I might add, over the last near twelve years, you and the board have transitioned Lake Placid from a mom and pop operation to a more formal, legitimate operation regarding oversight, finances, the logistics of the next. This is the next tier is still like to plan for the future. I feel like this particular reason, this project itself, in combination with the other smaller ones, are critical.
I do, I do think we have a foundation for it in our comprehensive plan. And, and obviously, uh, you know, that's, 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 that's a piece of our past. I've had some recent discussions with the chair of the development commission that the comprehensive plan, in my opinion, has a lot of good in it. The, the issue is that there's so much in it that we don't specifically look at it periodically and say, okay, how are we doing? We look at what we've done in the past year and what we hope to do next year, but we're not looking at the, the whole picture that, these are all strategic plans at the end of the day, however they're developed. And I, I do think that, uh, that this initiative could blend very nicely with, with what the community is looking for. We pass a plan, but then the community doesn't hold us accountable for it always. I hope that's a fair statement.
Well, we'll let you carry on with your business. Thank you, Greg, for your time and thank you, everybody.
One last question. Timing on this, if it did go forward, because right now you've got a land code group looking at what you're talking about. A big piece of this and we're bringing in a professional consultant.
And I think that we would just all work in synergy. We wouldn't stop one effort to start another. I think that we would look at, um, starting this initiative, you know, if we get the, once we get a more formal proposal and we bring it back to the board, the town and the village and everybody agrees, and then we engage the community and a little bit higher, you know, start the process, we would bring in all those other initiatives to make sure that we're just kind of all moving in the same direction. We're concerned, we don't want to stop anything, you know?
Correct. If you do go forward with this, what do you, when do you see it starting?
I guess we'd rather be looking at January or February of twenty twenty-one or whenever Greg was, I think we were the best, right? For his direction on that probably.
Right. We would probably start at the beginning of the year because December is a little problematic. We're already getting through October. We could do initial research and look at all of the different plans because it's very much nothing that we come up with should in any way, you know, encroach on anything that's already in development. It's designed to bolster and support whatever is already happening. So, um, we could start talking about that in November, December, but probably, uh, you know, coming to the destination and traveling, we would be looking at January.
Okay. So soon as he ends.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Just to clarify too, not too soon. Like we don't want to be like, no, no, but we don't want to like push it forward and then, you know, worst case scenario would be put all this time and effort into something that nobody's really willing to embrace or feel they're included.
Well, but there were quite, like the land co-review group is bringing in an outside professional group. They're going to be starting about January. You've got possibly to town hiring a housing coordinate position that's going to be starting up soon. So this is why, I mean, if you was waiting six, eighty months, they'd be behind you. People would be on the ground floor at this point.
If we need to wait, if that's better for all of the other developments taking place, then that's fine too, of course.
No, I think the timing would be good personally.
Okay. Great.
All at once.
Yeah, there's no point in being behind eight ball when you're committed. You should be on the ground floor of all things are being decided and hearing public hearings that are going on.
Absolutely. Perfect. All right. Well, it was great talking with everyone. Um, I believe I'm going to be addressing another group next week, more on this. I'm happy to jump on a call or talk further, um, with anyone. So thanks again. Sorry for the, the distractions we had there and I hope to talk to all you soon.
Tell your dog we're probably held up to walk. Dogs might come in here too.
I'll bring them. All right. Thank you again, everyone. Bye now.
Okay. We have, uh, I, I think you're all aware of the fact that the, uh, the bids for Main Street, we received five bids. The, uh, the bids range from roughly ten million to fourteen. And, uh, happens to come from one of the general contractors. um, and, uh, happens to come from one of the general contractors that was very comfortable working. And, uh, I think, uh, Peter, we're probably waiting right now on, uh, some direction from Ivan and Brad on that piece of it.
Brad's here.
Maybe a little bit early for that, but.
Well, no, we've looked at several things, but what we're doing now is we're putting each line item in the bid, uh, seeing where the big discrepancies are so that we could look at them. Because there, there seems to be a lot of the, a lot of the parts are equal as far as construction, but then you get into some of like the pedestrian, keeping the pedestrians, uh, and it, it seems like there's huge differences. So we, we want to get them all in order. We want them in a line so we can see why they're so big and we want to ask questions before we just, and, and we don't want, we don't want to get in there and have that somebody forgot something that they're going to have to have a change order later and starts making. It doesn't appear to be, it's just that there's, I mean, $4.2 million swing from high to lows, a lot.
It was converted to the Trump store line, right?
And they were. Like I said, right after the bid, the vice president, uh, Mike Dunn called and said that he's comfortable with that bid to go through it. He said he's comfortable. They're not.
He's aware of all the community service basically that has to happen on the street.
Yes.
With all the store owners, shop owners, keep the peace.
It is an important piece. They understand that. Uh, they've already put together, uh, it, it sounds like we might end up with the, uh, if they are awarded the bid, um, Mike's pea shot, which was the one, the Trump sword. And then Billy hand shit, that was the super on the, what we did around the drainage around the beach house. So Billy and Mike would probably be here for this. Uh, Mike has more of a.
You mean project engineers?
Well, no, one's a project manager, the other one would be a super of the construction. Both of them worked with us before. Billy's actually doing Sierra and Gavin right now. He's the one, the super on that job. Uh, they're, they're very comfortable with the bid. Uh, we just want to make sure that there's not something that stands out so that some, one of the other contractors can't say, we overlooked, they forgot something. So.
Better iron it out now before things.
Yeah. And, and, uh, so that's where we are with that. It, it looks like, uh, as soon as we do have an award, um, they've already talked to us about wanting to sit down, see what our feeling on, when we would like. Is there anything that we, they could, maybe come up and maybe just start planning some stuff here, getting some things up here, moving them from other jobs, putting stuff in areas so they don't have to truck it all the way back home. They're talking about leaving all their, um, barriers that they can hear from this job if they're awarded. So they, they basically want to get started as soon as they possibly can.
Well, relocating equipment, all that is a step for them. They've been really good on the bid. I don't think we should, I think we should work.
And they also don't end with that. They also, they're interested in them.
And again, the, uh, there are a lot of issues now that we're, uh, and, and I think, I think the state was waiting, DOT was waiting to see as we were, well, as we're coming out.
That's, that's what I have right here. This is something that we put together today. This is just rough numbers off of the Berkey's bid, drainage improvements, um, and pavement and curb. What we feel that it's, it's basically $1,534,245. We, we think that's the minimum that we should be receiving from the state.
Okay. Cause, cause that's the next piece that we need to work with Pat Barnes is.
We, we do have some other things in there that we feel they should probably, some removal and everything. So that number could go up, but that's the minimum be receiving.
Has there been any updated?
How can we handle that?
Well, so that's the other thing. I, we talked with, uh, with, uh, EFC. So, uh, they've been a big help in all this. They told us that the same thing happened in Lake George for that last construction project they did. And they said, you might want to go farther than just the people in E-Town or Holley.
Oh, yeah.
They said that Lake George just, just kept complaining, 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 complaining to Holley, the higher ups, literally. And they got tons of money thrown at them. Jim Diger said, you wouldn't believe what they gave them in that project because of their complaints. And it wasn't to Pat Barnes who eventually hired, you know, I mean, it was the people pulling the strings and everything. So basically the governor's office just screaming at them saying, is your road is ridiculous? You love to go this long? Look how bad it is. That's what EFC is kind of suggesting we do.
Given us good direction right along, so.
Who was in the village board should do that?
Yes.
And that's what they did?
They did that Lake George. They said they just kept complaining every time. The, uh, DOT and all, and he said, well, give me $600,000. They threw a fit and said, that's not enough. Look at this. This is what we have a construction bid. This is, that doesn't even cover this. And they ended up, he said, with a huge amount.
With the Imperial Bowl Highway, that, that job?
Yeah, all, all the curving. He said, al- almost everything was paid for that the state would have paid for if they did the road by the state because of complaints. And that's what EFC said. That's really where.
Get a contact later. Or who's, who's your complaint to?
Yeah. He said that that's, that's your best bet. He said unless you give them these numbers and they just say, okay, he doesn't believe that would happen. Um, because they already told us a couple of times, you've got 250, you've got 300,000, but.
Well, I think, uh, and again, I think our, uh, you know, I think our elected representatives are, are at this point, they're waiting on us to give them the information.
Or just call Jim. I hear Jim said that that's how they ended up with it.
The clerk and I from Lake George, uh, chatted a lot when it came down to parking here. So.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know where they went, but they, that's what he said. He said that, but we, I mean, and we can always start with, Pat Barnes is going to say, here's the numbers. You, here's the bid, this is the numbers, uh, and is there any way you can pitch in more than what you've been talking in the past? We, because we gotta have to, we have to have that higher down.
Yep.
Soon, like before spring, slow start. And also.
Anything that we can do with that diminishes the amount that we are on the long-term, you see, side.
So I'm a little unclear. I guess I thought we had a commitment from the state for over a million dollars.
Those are grants though.
Yeah.
And those are grants to do the project, but what they're saying is this is your road. We're doing this job against you would have had to have done.
So in addition to the million dollars, I need an additional 1.5.
Well, we have all the grant funding.
Yeah.
Just to the state, but you take the, the total, you take the grants off it. There's an amount that the state should pitch in.
And the state, the state essentially on the principle of.
The state, the state has indicated that they'll, they'll accept the responsibility for the, for the travel payment, which is theirs. Uh, what Brad is saying is that there's other pieces that were they doing the project, which oftentimes they do, they would be paying for. Could be curving. Uh, but, uh, now we've got some numbers that we can, we can actually work with and they can work with. And, uh, and, you know, with that information, where are, and we can also then go to, uh, the people, all the, that are going to make the difference. And maybe, it may be our elected representatives. It may be somebody higher up.
And they also be bad timing, states buying into.
Sure. Well, yes, we know. Remember, remember that, uh, we and the state are, are in a partnership with the university games. And frankly, I think the fact that you've gotten work done by the state on both sides of the village this year is in part their efforts to get us ready for that event, if it all waits until the last year because money's tight right now. This is going to happen. So I think, you know, I think this is, this is that moment where we do want to make sure we, we can ask for the right, we provide the right information and ask for the right amounts.
Yeah.
But, uh, but that, that is out there and, and there, there's never been a disagreement that they weren't going to face up and the question was how much is really going to be theirs. It's interesting in talking with DOT's people, it, it's rare that DOT on a state highway is in a situation where we're actually doing the project. It's our project.
Typically around usually.
With their occurs ordinarily, if you look at Tupper Lake, that was done by DOT. So we'll keep, we'll, we'll keep everybody up to date on that. Uh, we're, we're getting close. I think it's really good news. Um, anything else, Brad, there?
Not for the big, big no.
Kimball, uh, the incremental power, we will, I've got to copy something that says inside the file. So, uh, that's done. So we're good on, uh, our night of things. I think, Bill, you and I had a meeting last week, um, with, uh, Teresa Wilson, who represents a company out of Boston Spa called Olio. Don't ask me what Olio is. Spelled O-L-I-O. But they're a, they're basically a consulting firm that is engaging with communities that are looking for some assistance with, uh, the governor's order that we all have to do. Uh, and people thought, initially, we thought that if, if, if for some reason we chose not to do this, that it really didn't have an impact. But we've since learned from NICOM that the money that they can withhold, uh, does go beyond money's PD department gets, it gets into CHIPS funding. So we don't want to, we don't want to miss that up. So, uh, I, I, I think, I, I think we saw a proposal. I haven't had a chance to read it yet.
It was, did you see the number? It was 4,500 for the consultancy.
It's nothing compared to the amount of effort, but let's get together, uh, maybe tomorrow and, uh, see if we can, uh, uh, get to all the thumbnail sketch of what the proposal covers. I can, I can tell you that when I, when I looked at this book, I mean, this, this, this was written for Rochester, New York. It was not written for the small communities of New York State.
Basically, we have to engage, uh, the public and, you know, all stakeholders in the community at a, at a series of meetings or a meeting or.
I suppose that's somehow we have to do that.
Yeah. She's going to show me the facilitator for this, plus write some verbiage for the state when we set it.
Um, the other thing is she has, she has an interesting background in, uh, in, in public service areas. Comes out of a police family, which I frankly, I felt that, uh, you know, it's like we were talking to the fire.
Yeah.
But I do feel, uh, it, it's, it's something we have to do. It's, it's not something that I would, that I would be comfortable sitting down and trying to do. And I, I don't know if Bill, uh, uh, and his team have the ability. I think, I think, I think this is something where we want somebody that has particular leadership. We're not thinking about forming community task force. We're thinking about maybe a one-time community forum function.
Sort of like a public hearing where we listen and don't defend and.
Right. You just get their opinion. Right. I mean, it comes down, either you take your time, which is very short that you have right now, staff level, and you reinvent the wheel or you go to someone who's dealing with it day in, day out, get through, geez, $4,500.
Well, we have the, I feel we have the policies that are going to be in place. We feel we have the right policies. It's, it's the facilitation of getting this through. It works, it is honestly, that you have to submit to the governor's office is a little confusing, to put it mildly.
The things that they dealt with that you might not think of, Bill.
Yeah.
Nothing will be left through the cracks that way.
Well, and, and you know, I, I'm not, and, and this is the mayor speaking, maybe Bill won't agree with it, maybe he will, but I'm not, I'm not afraid of opening this discussion up in the community forum, quite frankly. Our, our police department in my 12 years here, I don't think has ever really had a, uh, the, the kind of animosity that we're seeing out there at other marketplaces. I, I think our department is, is seen as making a significant contribution to the community and, uh, and doing the job, uh, at, at times under staff, at times maybe, maybe almost staff. But, you know, we've, we've, we've come a long ways. Uh, flexible is, uh, is, is, it's moving forward and, uh, you know, it, it all takes man hours and resource. And by the way, Bill, I, I, I think I mentioned to you, but I saw our, one of our police officers walking the, the main street the other morning. It was about, I don't know, 9:30, 10 o'clock maybe. And, uh, you know, that, that in terms of getting compliance with, with this stuff is, uh, that is worth a ton to us.
Yeah, we've been doing that.
Yeah, that's, but I'm not sure everybody knows it.
People were getting pardon kicks on.
Yeah, I noticed he was carrying a handout log in his hand. But that's, you know, that's good work. Um, a couple of just little things here. I, I, I'm going to send this on to you, Bill, and to you, Brad. Uh, I got a, I got a notice as a property owner within 200 feet of the, uh, riding stable out here that they're proposing. I use, I want you to look at the entrance and the exit for cars.
Where is it?
Oh, yeah, we looked at it.
Yeah, we've been down there.
We've been down there. We marked it out. We told them where we thought.
Is, is that what she's proposing here, uh, which is around the, around the curve?
Yeah.
It comes out above the, uh, the pet store on the corner.
Yeah, we, we measured it from the intersection and it's compliant.
Far enough so that the sightlines will be okay? Cause frankly, I think people will park on the street anyway.
Yeah, that we went down and it's 50 foot from an intersection. We asked Mike where to measure it from. That's actually over 50 feet from where the intersection is. Um, yeah, it's going to, it's, it's, there's not a good spot anywhere in there, but to put it, the best spot to see to turn in is actually bring in the intersection. Cause that's the spot you can see the best, to follow the code. We have to bring it 50 foot out.
Another intersection like up back of us here.
Yeah.
Which way did they move it up towards the stable or down?
Closer to the, uh, that store.
Close to the.
It's probably from the corner itself at least 60 feet down.
Which wouldn't be a problem coming out of our site now, depending on what they put there to obscure your vision coming around the corner.
So they're going to take some trees down, so it shouldn't be less.
Yep. So anyway, that's, uh, the thought that this provoked on my part and the reason I brought it in was, um, because oftentimes, and I'll take the property next door to me on Wilmington Road. It's, it's, it's already been permitted as a restaurant with it, with it admitted lack of parking, parking, maybe okay during the COVID period. But, um, if you look at the driveway, there's only one driveway in and out of there. It's wide enough for one car or one truck. I think it's, it's, my, my concern really is, is, is more to the point that, you know, when, when the planning office and the planning board are approving these projects, uh, I, I really think that if it impacts on village streets, that there should be at least a referral to the village so that, that somebody looks at it and blesses it. Uh, I'm not saying we didn't look at the building out back, but and it, it, in the end, it's probably turned out okay because we, we took a waste of parking to make it work. But, uh, but it's still, it's, it's a congested intersection and all with cars both go and trying to get into that entrance and then trying to get out so they can drive around and park. It's just, I, I, it's something I'll, I'm happy to discuss it with Billy early in particular. Most of these type of projects go to him. Not sure this one will, since it doesn't really involve construction. I guess it's going to be tables.
Sounds like.
Another little project we've got going, uh, a while ago, Anita in the village received a letter from a lady who was, uh, looking to, uh, get involved with, with yet another granite bench. Um, and this person was not, as Connie had expressed to me many times, uh, this person was not a local person. In fact, it was an Ironman. They came to Lake Plaza often for that purpose. And they wanted to do something in this person's memory. And I, I said, well, I have a, I said, based on my knowledge of the benches, the benches have kind of been reserved for local people. We do have one right now. And I need to ask you whether we have another site somewhere where we can get it. This person was mostly a seasonal property owner here, lived around the backside of her lake. Um, talked to Ruth Hart. Ruth said, oh yes, she said, we used to have lunch. Talked to Ruth Hart. Ruth said, oh, yes, she said, we used to have lunch with her every Friday, big supporter of the horse shows, symphonada, that type of thing. So that's that's that one that's being worked on right now. And but this 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 Ironman, you know, they went back to them and suggested that maybe we look at something different. So we're looking at the possibility of installing and apparently they're interested in raising the money to do this. A gazebo that would be installed in the beach park. I think Dean's Development Committee that works on this stuff, this appearance committee's been overlooked. They're looking at a spot that is in the general area of the tennis courts, you know, and and fairly close to where that size was, as we put it. There's a there's a flat area there that would would accept it. Might be nice for people that want to get in out of the rain or someone of purpose. It'll be it'll 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 have a plaque on it that'll recognize this person in particular and there are made a connection. I think the gazebo, the basic gazebo is about five gram. I think probably the village and park district would put a little bit of support in helping them get it set.
Where are we this going in?
By the tennis courts.
By the tennis courts. I have a bar in.
On the other side.
I wanted to keep it away from the playground because there's room there right now for another set of playground equipment, which we all know, we we went after a grant last year to try to get that done. There was a woman that really worked hard on that. We didn't get the grant, but sooner or later, motoring or somebody will will let be looking. And right now they're working on bus stops for trolleys, but.
Jason, if you look there now, there's flags put out where they want to put it.
Yeah.
On the east side of the thing.
Cause we're Delaney sent some for his Ironman stuff.
Know where the kiosk is up there. That's the one they just put his tri thing on. You know, like bars and kiosks.
So it's right there. Well, that's.
I'll stop mine. I'll just.
Seems like it's probable.
If you drive into.
Well, I I express a concern.
People are not away of anything.
We have to be sure as we've opened space for people.
It will be a engagement photo. People will be lining up to have engagement photos taken.
It's it's what they have flagged off is not that big, maybe.
I think it's just open area. Yeah, it's a ten by twelve structure that they're recommending or suggesting at this point.
It's flagged off and ordered flagged.
St. Agus, hell, one five thousand bucks. We looked at some stuff to put there. Just get out of the weather.
Yeah.
People washing their kids. It's a whole lot more than five thousand dollars.
You can, like when you're driving down to Alden on the right, you can see what they've got gazebo's pre-made just sitting.
Oh, at Alvin Haas, right?
So it appears that the appearance committee is is at least the information I've gotten appears that they're they're supportive of the idea. And they're leaving the flags up until Thursday, so we can help.
I think one of the concerns we should think about is the quality of it and maintenance afterwards. It will be ours afterward.
Yeah, it'll 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 undoubtedly fall to the village and park district will probably be the two entities that will.
Which will eventually get to the highway because the park will ignore it probably.
Well, I'm not really worried about that. The only thing that would be a concern is what will affect when they setting up for Ironman and putting things in the lake right there. That's the only. Because a lot of them, they do know the truck up there that's about the sheriff's department. Fisherman. But it is. It's not an area that's really used for very much. It's kind of.
Would it impede the fire department from putting the load in there if they had to?
Yeah. But they have a loophole and they're back in. You'd have to back in probably from the. There's the yard pulled out and then just back. Yeah, I just I know that during the park over there a lot. They had certain things. That's the only thing that I can see. I think it's really not anything that we do over there.
I like the idea. I just gotta save the logistics of it. It's gonna cost more of a headache.
Well, hopefully they won't paint it. Hopefully it'll be stained.
I'm not. Yeah, it's just gonna. I believe it. One of the ones that just sat on the ground, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. We could up with the load. It ain't on the box.
Darkly blue.
Take it to precinct or on the line. I think.
Who's us before we approve to make sure that it's something you maintain?
Yeah. So do check out the markers where they've got.
Yeah, I've already looked.
Okay. If they have to be adjusted, also time to make move the markers. Anything else? Kim?
No, I'll be ready for the next meeting.
The two point one million dollar switch that was put in us, implicit after now it's all done. Sure, a lot of work to get it to where it is. I went down today to look. And actually today, they're doing work on the substation three.
One.
One. I thought home's the powerhouse.
No.
That's true. That's three. Okay, so they're doing work on one. Should it just work with the fact that we have as a bypass, we have to put the village down to do it. Because it is like, here's the first fruit of our labor.
A lot of work to adjust those circuit breakers.
Oh, yeah, right. But I mean, that's the first.
You guys patrol it and they found a squirrel hotspot. It was either three or four dead ones. I forget what the report was.
Well, there's a lot of there's enough to go around.
I even pulled the transformer from my my house. Just threw that all the time. You'd have probably squirrel for lunch.
Go bring it back.
Yeah.
It's like a cannon going off and the squirrels cross the wires. Blow those transformers.
Okay, well, we got a lot of balls in motion and if we haven't got enough, I mean, what what Jim's people presented is probably will be another one.
I'm part of that committee and I heard the presentation. I want to say a month and a half ago. And the first thing I thought was village itself has quite a few studies going, but as they went on, then I'm thinking, how is this gonna integrate into what is already being addressed on a on a micro level? So is he understanding they're gonna make recommendations? Yeah. And we're gonna take them or not take them?
I think the development commission, but 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 Roost Roost. It appears that Roost is gonna be the point person for this to come back and goes forward. That's my my sense. But I'll I'll send you all the record recently because if you take the time, go out and look at it, there's a pretty good deal to what they were dealing with. I'm not so sure that you won't agree that it feels an awful lot like where we are.
So the marketing they made, they made the recommendations.
After the.
After they got the recommendations.
Did they take any recommendations anyway? I think it's it's expensive, but I go and I knew what we're doing. If you're you're in it for the long haul, and I think her family is, this is probably pretty critical to Bill's. Just my two cents. As Mr. Klein says, here's Jason's two cents.
So so Bill, I guess on this on this thing here, we just need to get her get her proposal to.
She emailed it to both of us, but if you don't have it there, I'll.
I I saw I saw it, but honestly, over the weekend, it was. I was on a beach in Jersey Shore.
Nice.
It turned out spectacular. I mean, Eric said, sent me, he said, you know, we're gonna we're gonna take Max down. There's a kite. There's a kite flying exhibition going on on the beach of Long Beach Island. He said you like it. Wasn't much else I could say. But it it was. It was really neat. There were hundreds of kites in the air. Some of them were really pretty damn fancy and some of them were just kites. But but there were hundreds of people on the beach and the people were social distancing amazingly well, I thought. That's what was going through my mind after I booted out over the kites. But, yeah, beautiful beaches. Nice, nice real estate there. I left with a different impression than. I I just assumed. But but, you know, he did say, he said, well, I said, there's beaches and there's beaches. He said, this one's really nice. Basic.
Well, the true testament is, did you buy a kite in a home?
Yeah.
The passion transfer.
Well, it was it was a quick trip, but it was kind of interesting though, because we were driving south to New Jersey when all of New Jersey was driving north to the Adirondacks. And I gotta tell you that with traffic was huge. So yesterday we're coming back up and I'm looking over the southbound lane and all of the jerseys at home.
Two seven three.
But I was shocked at the hour we got in and light was beginning to go bad. The number of cars that were still on the trail that's coming through all all the way up through.
All weekend long.
Huge. I think, you know, I think I think I think the management problem for hiking is 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 something the the state is gonna have to figure it out.
See, go on the street. Now I can't go hiking either. Don't park. Now, it's still in the middle of the woods. Don't park.
Maybe what they do, if they don't want to sell permits to the park, why don't they sell a permit for parking?
There is something that's talking about the permit system for hiking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
But but that doesn't that doesn't control the the number of people that are hitting some of the trails.
Also sell permits for the parking lot. That's a lot. Also makes matters on that as well.
Okay, I guess probably Peter just I I think we can, at this point, we can inform the board that, you know, we're still in conversations on the on the bank parking lot with one with the property owners.
Mid May, mid May, that's what you said, no more than we do.
Well, move the clock tower over. We prefer to do this clock tower.
Central maybe.
Any of that, there's and I I received, I received a letter from the from the one family that we we really need to strip off the easterly side of their lot. They've they they have the property on the on the market for sale, but they've also, I got a letter from Jim Brooks that he's representing the owner. So he's asked for some information, which we'll give him the sheet.
I love that Jim Brooks can sue us almost tomorrow.
We did the money from the great expansion at a few times, but that's probably not a bad idea of moving that car over to the new, if we do do the garage area. And then eventually, if we could, we can maybe make the other surplus and sell it off to help pay off whatever.
Well, I think I think that potentially could be, should should be something we keep in front of us for the future.
Yes. How many parking spots are in the clock parking lot?
Twenty twenty two.
So it'd be maybe your ninety spaces, you'd be down to seventy something.
Main Street would go psycho if we got rid of that.
Well, we got some.
Your idea has common sense in there.
However.
However, put it in the context of reality. Everyone would want to share that.
Well, you've also got, you know, the Northwoods property is is starting their renovations work. It's hard to say what that's gonna do to the main street, but it'll it'll add to the excitement of contract yourself getting. Big parking lot and.
Because we are willing. So not prolong this meeting. Are we putting the release action, any actions to the municipal lot with overnight parking, changing and pricing or they just putting that, the whole thing off or are we gonna break off a piece and maybe tackle that? Or is it just, we should just do a whole or like a complete review of, you know, our sparking and all that?
Right now, I I have pulled out the local laws that really govern all of this and discovered just just how how complex stuff is because it's funny that we have we have a lot. We have a local law for parking, but some of the parking stuff is actually the vehicle and traffic law. So I asked Bill's department and and our police commissioners to to start working on it and let's do it because this this is gonna affect next spring. If this construction all gets underway, I mean, we we need to, we need to look at all of it. So what I've got right now is a stack of folders about that high on my desk that are just little amendments to the original law, which was done in forty seven and then replaced in ninety eight.
Also current.
And even since ninety eight, there's been a lot of amendments. So.
We're gonna put it on the whole.
That that's my contribution on that. We did get a letter from one of our residents on Main Street asking us not to act precipitously on the on the overnight parking fee. But he's he's a he's a resident that's active on a couple of our main street committees, so probably have to have some question conversation with him about that. Yeah. We've got to make it attractive enough that people that are taking advantage of it right now do the right thing.
Do you think if we have a two tiered, like one for vacation rental owners and one for workers, people who live on the street, if that can be enforced? The two permit systems, basically one vacation rental pay more. Different color tags.
Well, legally, can we do it?
Can legally, can can we do it legally? Jim says no to everything. I think we should stop.
Everybody's starting throwing.
Well, you're it's you're talking long term.
It's more important preventing preventing public law.
So I don't see why you couldn't. So in other words, the the each permit is assigned to a complete number. Yeah. So if somebody comes and they say, well, I want to park for three days, you have to pay a meter. So we can issue where.
That's how we can do it. That wouldn't be the.
Yeah, I mean, the the other ones are assigned to a flight number, like, you know, your family or whoever's, you know, out there and and it's a hundred and fifty dollars for the year. Yeah.
So.
The boss guy gives it to every guest to give them the same one over and over.
Well, that's that was agreed upon by you guys, not by me.
No, I'm just saying, so we we could create a totally different.
Yeah, we could certainly. We actually disagreed. It never came to the board.
I mean, it's it did.
His did, but now since there's the requirement, the land code for the village, vacation rental, circuits requiring them to have a spot. We've never said that one person can do it and multiple people can use it. I I disagree with that systematically.
No, we we actually have been doing that though.
We did for we did for the bear house.
So they pay a hundred and fifty dollars for one permit for their guests.
And then they give every person comes in.
We buy one of them. They they buy one of the one because they are both.
Say they bought or paid for parking for twenty four hours for a guest. In the municipal lot, we did the dollar an hour for twenty four hours. That's eighty seven hundred dollars a year for three hundred sixty five days.
Yeah, exactly. That's the money that me and I have to provide for. Yeah. That that that's why I keep coming back to the overnight, like, we can tackle this. Because this is, I understand that it's part, but I understand the mayor's approach of wanting to be comprehensive and and enter and have everything fleshed out. But this is something that we can tackle very easily and then adjust on the fly.
Very easily because like Mary Ann is this college, she wanted to buy a fifty dollar.
Well, I thought that too, but like we, people would.
Happy when we went to fifty seven.
Like Jason's first point. I would like to move on to the years of the block soon first and then study all the other stuff. Because this money, we can't deal with, Mary has a world until we do that. But this six months of losing out on money is going to take away from what we could potentially give towards the community fund or these sort of projects. I think that's money for just, or not. It's revenue that we would generally norm, we would normally generate that we can use for the benefit of the village. If we don't, then it comes out of the tax.
Okay, let me let me put one more factor on the table. The next two and a half months may be no traffic.
And and that's something that can get.
Exactly. Doing what we did in the spring to give the stores a little endorsement or I mean.
And I can that I can understand that sort of predicament.
Christmas.
We don't. We don't really know, but after next weekend, I think we'll 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 have a better.
Okay. I understand where you're coming from.
I think I really think that that Roost, who did the curbside promotion last spring, probably should bring that back.
I think Jason was just saying only do the overnight parking and the parking lots for now and research the rest. So that's not gonna affect what you're talking about.
Because the permit, the people who have permits will have a spot. Everyone else.
But I think we also have to address the issue of are we going to allow me to have two vacation rentals on Main Street by one parking permit?
No, absolutely not.
You've got to have one permit per unit.
Yes.
You got.
Right, so now you got two. You've got parking for the whole year. You've got parking the whole year for your people. I'd love that in a motel. You guys wanna come down and put in a parking spot for me? For every room, I'll pay a hundred and fifty. You plow sand, blacktop. You see what I'm saying? The village is subsidizing, taxpayers subsidizing those people parking. I think you have to do something. Maybe what you said is correct. Give us a license plate. That's your parking place. That's it. Well, not parking place, but
Had a higher Because you're a business.
For vacation rentals, you'd have to commit and register the vehicle every week. Well, you'd have to buy a new one every week. Yeah, or you'd have to raise the price because it's a transferable permit. Well, and they're going to have
Civil permit or non-transferable. So that, that's
I don't see any reason why a transferable permit can't be pre-priced to the, to the higher rate.
That's true.
True.
They drove one of them every week.
Right. But that, we're starting to title something a little bit more complex, but we go just back to the municipal lot and overnight parking.
But you're in front of Jason. It's kind of like you put parking meters here, it chases everyone over here. You put meters there, it chases them. I think once you start charging at night, they're gonna start jumping on this hundred and fifty dollars and I just let everyone park their all year. So we gotta be ahead of them on that.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
One hundred percent.
I just, I think what he's saying makes a lot of sense. Here it is. And if you want a transferable one, it's a thousand a year instead of saying it's a hundred and fifty. That's great.
I, I would be, I would support that one hundred.
But at least it's a good first step.
We gotta start with municipal lot, you're talking overnight. Yes, that's for starting overnight.
Yeah, just like I'm saying, part of that is, if you do that, you start charging overnight. Now the people that have those vacation rentals are gonna jump in and buy their permits. And if all they have to pay is a hundred and fifty dollars per rental unit for the whole year, what a deal.
Yeah, we can't change that until the end of May, right? Till middle of May, we can change that.
Because of the permit system?
Yeah.
No, we don't do that.
Well, unless you, unless you do a, a transferable.
That's right. We're still requiring it, but they have to buy a transferable permit because they don't have a license plate in their car.
Yeah, so, but do you want it still expire or they all expire in May?
Couple of things, this is provoking a little bit. I, I think about the next week, right, I mean, in the We're at a point now where we begin to we have to give a successful Hopefully, probably most of it's not gonna be, but I completely might want to bring in or telling see what to do with it. I don't see good enough information yet.
As soon as she gets negative comments, that'll change.
Cause I think that's, that's the deep, that somebody, if somebody asks us what what this is gonna do to their property taxes, we, we sure still wanted to have an answer.
But that money that you're generating could go towards a study like that. Would be interesting to see twelve dollars a night, let's say. Or would it be cheaper than when you do pay a thousand dollars for a permit for the year and let everyone pay twelve dollars a night? Oh, and Marilyn, Marilyn Thomas said that they would be willing to purchase a spot at the, if they built the whole lot, right? Right, so, and the Haas said that too. So I think there's some people that are willing to
I agree.
As the mayor's term is a skin in the game, but they're willing to pay a substantial amount of money a year to do that.
And I was very adamant. I was very against when Paul brought up the sort of the priority pricing debate. But now it seems, in time, it seems to be with the legislation to be enacted. It, it only seems like a board on conclusion. It's a reminder to go about it. Cause it's not, it's not fair. He is not claiming as, no, it's not fair, but it's to the point where it's, we're, we're letting businesses act. As businesses, but they don't have to. As far as the health inspector, as far as all these other fees and regulations, they're just walking, skating by without, without being negatively economically. At least a reasonable, fair share. So I think the number I know, middle age, you almost have all the trees.
Surprised they didn't
Well, but it tells you if we build a parking lot.
It's like it's
Twenty-five dollars.
Well, we're So it's twenty-five or it's been using right along.
Right, but some way, we're, I think, if, if when the midMain Street parking garage gets built, you're going to need to do away with the permit parking at the end of Main Street because there's going to need to be parking.
It could be.
It's just long.
Before we talk for long, extending that down.
Yep. Pushing meters further.
Absolutely right. Who would have thought that? Put the meters all the way down to the front of the cottage.
It could be one down. Yeah.
Why would we do
Yeah, solar unit and it, it wasn't reliable. This, that's my understanding.
Number four. We've had that internumber so many times.
Yeah, we can have permit partner. That's, that's people's mind, but that's neither here nor there.
But, you know, you know, I don't, there's probably no reason why, other, other than the fact that I think we have to have a public hearing to make that all night change. We'll, we'll need to we'll need to look at that with the
During the same hearing, could we create the transferable parking permit thing too?
Like I say, you can't do one without the other. You just jump on and you can play in while your grandfather is not.
I would caution that we should have numbers for that.
Well, it might Since it, that you had to have the parking permit, it'd be a different color. We can be having this conversation. But he, when, when Mary Ann told, he told me, Mary Ann said she wasn't gonna provide parking. Okay. So the village is, now, now we realize that'll go right down the street like a cancer.
Yep, without a doubt. This would be, be even seen the worst of it.
If you can rent your place out on Main Street three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, multiply that times twelve, you get four thousand three hundred each. Right now, all they have to do to pay for parking places is a hundred and fifty dollars. There lies the problem.
They don't have to pay for anything.
They, they have been in the minutes for a lot.
If we start charging one, then they're gonna buy these permits for a hundred and fifty, transfer it to everybody unless we do something like Bill's talking about. Maybe if we charge them fifteen hundred a year. You know, it would help pay off that parking garage in hurry.
I agree. And it's not coming out of someone who is a worker bee who is now having difficulties even like fulfilling, if that, having them pay a thousand dollars like Right. People who are literally, they are legitimately busy every single and they're making money.
All right. But like you said, I, I don't think the person that will say works in bath, stocking, shoes and has to go to work. And you should be charged hype. I mean, that's, there's, there's gotta be something done for that. That's where the hundred and fifty dollar permit comes in.
Yep, cause we need those people and right now we don't have enough of them.
Of course, those
You got any ones coming soon?
The State's Department lost a lawsuit. And it's to somebody sued to try to get them allowed. So I don't know if it's gonna be appealed or not. So yeah, it ends up now they're coming right before Christmas.
Did you cancel, did you cancel your coyote?
We're like, I don't need you anymore. It's official. They can come in after the lawsuit.
Okay, good. I, I, I think we can probably end both this meeting.
You wanna hop up and see that? You're not worried about it till next year.